I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting for January 23rd, Tuesday night, to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom?
Here.
James?
Here.
Donnie?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
Candy?
Here.
If I could get approval of tonight's agenda, please.
Motion to approve of tonight's agenda.
I have a second. Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Uh, Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
And I could get an approval of the December 18th minutes. Make a motion. We approve the December 18th minutes.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Roll call, please.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
At this time, I will open it up for comments from citizens. This is for anything that's not on the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to discuss, please step to the podium, state your name, address, and try to keep it to three minutes or less. Not seen any, but nobody online. Close the comments. No old business. I'm going to actually, uh, open up the public hearing tonight for the rezon. The applicant is requesting to rezone a piece of land containing one acre from R3 Residential to C2 General Commercial located at 695 Spinoto Avenue. The parcel number is on there. At this time, I will open it up for the public to comment on item number one in the public hearing. You can if you want to, sir. Yes, sir?
I had given my daughter, she sold it out for money. But anyway, uh, from what I understand, they're supposed to try to get it rezoned for commercial, to build, at least to build a building in the back, then build a house in the front. Is that correct?
I have not. Uh, I'll let Brad. Do you know, sir?
Go ahead and let him say his name and his address.
I'm sorry, name and address.
Ron Stockton, 729 Spinoto.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ron. And do you know the specifics on?
Yeah, we'll get into it when we get into the commission part.
Well, we'll talk about it.
And when I got the, that's the only thing that really concerned me, is gonna put in a commercial building right there, you know? But I know logically, if I, if I'd bought that and want to build in the back, I'd like to do it first myself before you ever try to build a house right there, because it'd be a nightmare to get around there. It'll be a lot of work to, uh, build that up enough where it won't flood anyway. So, anyway, I just want to say I don't have any objection if they go back to the residential after they get a building put in there. So, that's what I was gonna say, man.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you. Anybody else? Nobody online? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna close the public hearing. We don't have a board exony tonight, so we're gonna move right into the Planning Commission meeting. And the first item up for discussion is the rezoning. Applicant is requesting to rezone a piece of land containing one acre from R3 Residential to C2 General Commercial located at 695 Spinoto Avenue. Parcel is on there. And who is going to be? Mark?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna be talking about?
As you mentioned, uh, we're looking at a piece of land. It's one acres in size. Uh, it's currently Z, or R3. And the owner would like to, uh, zone it to C2 Commercial. Property's located on the south side of Spinoto. Reason for the change in zoning is to build a commercial building to house his business in. Our future land use plan basically identifies that as a residential transition, commercial neighborhood. Which can be a kind of a commercial mixed use. Uh, staff analysis, uh, there's water and sewer available for connection along Spinoto. The proposed rezoning should not deter affect nearby properties and can be considered under the current future land use plan. The staff is recommending, based on the availability of utilities and minimal expectation impact, from changing that from R3 to C2. Uh, if the, if the commission agrees to approve the rezoning, then that property would fall under a large-scale development review before a building permit would be issued. So that would be one of the conditions that we would request from the commission if, uh, approved.
Very good. Thank you. I will, at this time, open it up for your public comment. If someone would like to comment on this specific item, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and try to keep it to three minutes or less.
657 Ardemani Road. Larry Ardemani. Uh, the only problem that I see, well, actually two. If they're gonna build commercial, then residential is, I believe, we only allow the shop buildings or commercial buildings to be two-thirds the size. That may be R3 only, or R2, R1. I'm not sure about that. Not up to code on it. And then the other thing, I don't know what kind of truck traffic they're anticipating as far as commercial, but Spinoto is one and a half lanes at best. And if you're anticipating large trucks, I don't know the answer to that. If it's gonna be commercial, that might be a problem. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other comments from citizens? Not seen any. I will ask for a motion first before discussion. Commission?
Motion to approve the rezon request for 695 Spinoto, Spinoto Avenue with conditions.
Second.
Motion is second. I will open it up for discussion. What questions does the commission have?
Is? I will let you know the applicant is here to discuss if you have any questions, Mr. Merrill.
Thank you, sir.
Is, is the entire black box just the one acre?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Russell Merrill. Uh, I do own 695 Spinoto. Would like to have it rezoned so I can build a metal shop. Uh, as far as a commercial building, I just, I'd wanna build a shop, uh, to store my snow cone business supplies. I've got a, a snow cone business, and in the off-season, we've got to store stuff. I don't, my shacks don't stay on locations. Uh, the supply's gotta come. So, um, as far as traffic, I don't see any additional traffic as, other than myself showing up to, uh, you know, uh, drop off supplies, pick up supplies, stuff like that. Um, as far as taking a commercial, I'd be fine leaving it residential, because the ultimate goal is to also build a house, uh, and then have a house on an acre with the shop in the back. Uh, but I guess as far as where things have to go, it has to be, can't build the shop before the house.
That's correct. Candy?
When do you plan on building a house?
I don't have any specific timeline. Uh, my funds will determine that, you know, specifically. Um, but we've got lots of options. My kids will be out of the house. We've got a nice, big, beautiful house right now that, um, we might downsize from in the future, so we could build there and then sell the, the current house, but I don't have a specific timeline.
I drove out there today. It looks like, do you have a footing poured?
That's original to the property when?
That was already there.
So I'll need you to, I can just come up to the mic so the people, if they're online, they can hear you. Thank you.
That was a slab we poured for my granddaughter to move my sister's house on. And once we did that, she got mad and decided she'd just sell the lab. So, that's where I'm at, sir.
So is a, is a residence allowed in a C2?
It'd have to be under conditional use.
Under CEP?
It is. Yes. We face, and I will just say, point of information, we faced this, you know, about two or three months ago with a gentleman on Arbor Acres. He was having some issues. The, um, code enforcer came out because he was storing equipment there, and he's not allowed, because he don't have a residence. So this was one way, when we brought it to you, that we would have to rezone it to commercial, just so he could put a building out there to store. So, when you build a building, are you, an additional unit outside the primary, you have to have a primary residence, because that gauges, you're right, 67% in this particular residential zone is all you're allowed for that type of building, uh, based on, 67% based on the residential home that's there. Since there's no home there, we can't gauge that. So this is one way we could look to see, to temporarily get this taken care of.
May I ask, uh, is there a setback? If it's 67%, would it be, is there a setback requirement so that he could put the footprint of the house in front, so to keep it rather transition, you know, as a buffer?
Yeah.
Or is there, is there some sort of a regulation we have with this? I mean, if it's C2, but is that in there, or how does that?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys are proven, and it's approved through city council, he'd have to abide by the zoning regulations for C2.
Yes, but I'm saying, that's not... It, it may not be there's a setback far enough to put the footprint of the house in the front, and maybe he's just saying, no, it's 67%. You put it right in the middle, and he didn't never have to build it.
Well, 67% is not the, I mean, that's just based on the size of the house. That's only 67% of the, is what the shop has to be, based on that size of that house. If that makes sense?
Okay.
Yeah. That's not a setback.
So if this is, this is a temporary fix, what would happen when he comes back and he would have to apply for conditional use?
Conditional use, or rezone it back to R3.
That sounds so silly. That just sounds ridiculous.
Uh, the codes are currently set up, unfortunately.
So we don't have a neighborhood services type of a zoning that would allow a shop warehouse?
For personal use, but not for a business to run out of it, like a storage for a business. And it specifically says that you can have a storage, but it cannot be to where you're living there and using that as, as, as an office there. So it has to be truly storage for your off-site business.
Okay. So you can't have a business license there?
That's correct. That's my understanding.
In neighborhood services, or in what?
In the residential piece of it. That's why it's having to go to C2.
Does the commercial trades and services zone work? C2, and then go back to R3? I'm, I got, even if it says that in here, I'd, that'd seem like?
I mean, I agree. I mean, I know it's, it's kind of a.
It does have, it does have the opposite for hospital, yes.
One of the traffic would take it.
Is there?
It's, it's, and I get it, it's contiguous to a C2 piece. It just seems like a radical, I mean, well, the fact that there's single families across the street, there's, 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 uh, pretty parks, pretty
That's right. But you look at our current zoning, in the very second to the last one, says warehouse, residential, mini self-storage. Then you look under that in 153, 173, it talks about it in B, where that's how it's, the exception on that piece of it. So that's why it's, that's why they're doing what they're having to do on that. It's because of that piece of the pie that we've got in there.
Man, I wonder what the definition of individual storage unit is, because that and the shop's not the same thing, I wouldn't think. C2's just too drastic, for me. Commercial trades and services, it sounds to me like to be better suited for it.
And that is how our future land use is set up for that, is, is the, but that's the future land use, so that's not our current piece of it. Um... What are the questions? Don, you got anything?
Now, it, uh, I kinda agree with Josh, that the C2 is awfully drastic. And you don't know what you're planning for it now, but then maybe you decide to sell to something that's even more drastic business with more traffic, more trucks, things like that, that
Mm-huh.
that you, that you sell later, you know, that you sell to somebody else to do later. So it, it, it's concerning to me, for the fact that there's residential in there.
What other questions do y'all have? Seeing none, then I will ask for a roll call. And this is for the approval of R3 to C2 with conditions.
Tom?
No.
James?
No.
Donnie?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Josh?
No.
Candy?
No.
Motion fails.
Uh, moving on to item number two, is an industrial, uh, industrial circle, large-scale development. The applicant is requesting LSD approval to construct a 7,564 square-foot retail center with four units on approximately 1.05 tract of land on West Henry de Tonte Boulevard. Mark, is this one you as well?
No, that's Zach. Zach reading, yeah, large scale. Yep.
Good evening, commission. Um, we've got a LSD for you to, uh, discuss this evening. Uh, this is on industrial circle. It's, uh, on a smaller tract of land. We're looking at doing, uh, commercial property with four retail subunits. Um, it was a previously developed, uh, I'm sure you know what it was before. I can't, the name eludes me. It was some, uh, other commercial business. Uh, they will be revamping the whole site with new infrastructure, including parking lot, landscaping, water and sewer services. So, if you've got any questions, the applicant is here to answer, and, uh, we'll try to guide you through it.
Okay. I will open this up for public comment. We have anybody that wants to comment on this before I? No comment? Anybody online? Nope, nobody online. I will ask for a motion on this one first, please.
Motion to approve the preliminary LSD for 895 East Henry de Tonte Boulevard with conditions.
Second.
Motion in seconded. Open it up for discussion, commission. Questions do you have?
Plaza Tire Service.
That's, I believe that is Plaza to the east of it, yes. I saw the landscape designs and everything on there, but I did not see the, the fascia of it. About, was I missing it somewhere, or is that, oh, you do have it? Okay, I was just curious. I did not see it. If, if you could just kind of let us, that would be awesome. Thank you. I know we're, I know there's some, I'm gonna pass it down there, let Candy start with that, sorry.
I don't know. Daniel asked me with ESI if you got any questions.
Thank you, Dana. I didn't, I didn't mean to. I just knew it probably looked good, but I didn't get a chance to see it. Candy likes to look at the brick. Just kidding, Candy. I know you do. We all do. We all do. Y'all have any other questions as we're passing that through?
I just, a comment, uh, with the tech review, they were pretty buttoned up on everything, and it looked really good. And Zach ringing them in on where they need to be, so I think this is a good project for our city.
I, it's, it's, it's neat to just drive around, not even Tonty Town, to other cities. And you're seeing a lot of these, these type of developments that are kind of coming in that are for the smaller, uh, companies that, you know, don't need a big office space, but they need some warehouse space too. So I think that's, uh, I mean, I think it's a need, and it's, 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 it's nice.
I'll note, I like seeing these, uh, some of these older, maybe dilapidated lots getting revamped. Uh, this is certainly one of those. Um, we've worked with the ESI to get, uh, all of our comments addressed through tech review. I do have one drainage issue that I see no problem we can't work through during the construction plans of this, so, um, I only had one special comment, but, uh, we can get that fixed before this gets approved for construction.
Very good. Any other comments from commission?
I had, I had a question on, um, and Zach, you may be able to answer this. The curbing, there were several options here on the plans. Do you know which one?
Uh, so, I think we added some of the, the RDOT curb, um, on there for, for instance, like there, there's a little island where you're pulling out on the 412. There's a little, I think they call it a channelization island, but it's just to force you to only be able to turn right out, to try to keep people from turning left in. And that's a different curb that starts off low and kind of angles up, that kind of a taper. So if you do hit it, it doesn't bust your tire open. Um, but for along the street, it's going to be just your standard curb and gutter, like, like you see, would, would see throughout the city, really.
Okay.
Also, RDOT makes you show all of their different variations in your standard detail, so he was obligated to show, you know, all 45 different versions.
Okay.
Don't know if that, if that's your.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
A fence to the back, where, um, tire Plaza sits on this side.
We're not showing or proposing any fencing, really. Um...
I'm just thinking about people who are gonna cut through Plaza Tire to get to work
So, so there is a stub out at Plaza Tire, at the southwest corner of Plaza Tire, and that's our southeast corner. Um, and we, we talked about potentially making that connection with staff, and I think we talked about it at Tech Platte, too. And in our curb, our, our concrete and everything, we're not gonna get close to that stub out. So if they were gonna try to cut through like they're talking about, they're gonna have to jump the curb and go cross-country, uh, 10, maybe 15 feet. There's a, there's a curve right there. So, I'm not gonna say you couldn't do it, and that somebody on a Saturday night in the 4x4 isn't gonna do it, but, you know, short of putting barricades up, we can't stop it, Greg. But we're not gonna make it easy for them.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions? Not seen any. I will ask for a roll call, please. This is for the approval of the large-scale development with conditions.
Josh?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Candy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Oh, let's see. So, uh, the rezon does not go to Planning Commission, but it can be appealed to Planning Commission if he wanted to.
City.
Oh, sorry, city council. I always say Planning Commission, because I think they're just as good as we are, sometimes. But, uh, so that does not go. So I will ask, let's see, December building activity report. Y'all got any questions? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, this is, uh, to complete the full year, um, commercial evaluation was, was really strong this year, along with the, uh, fees. Did really well. Think we're only too short of last year on the commercial side, um, but the evaluation was much higher than it was a year before. Residential side is still hanging in there. Um, the valuation down a little bit compared to last year, but the permits were, uh, much more. I mean, it was good, healthy, um, income. And you can see there's only three less residential permits compared to the year before. So, um, we are seeing a little bit of slowdown. Um, hopefully, uh, some of these, uh, subdivisions will actually get moving, and, uh, will it be able to see some more houses built. Did want to mention that on the, uh, projects, some activity, the Maven Commercial is complete. They're requesting for a final on that, so as soon as weather breaks, you can get out there and get a final on that, uh, project. Um, Zach and I've been over to, uh, Washington County Planning a few times now regarding the Deer Valley. Deer Valley is a project that the engineers kind of messed up and didn't submit the, there has to be both submitted to us in the planning and submitted, since it's in the county, they didn't submit, so they're going back through it. And, uh, the challenge they're having right now is, is that the, uh, the road superintendent didn't have a chance to be there when they did all the testing on it. And, uh, so, um, we'll see where that goes, but that has not been final at all. Also, there was a review on a million acres, so I think we're moving forward on that. Um, again, the engineer didn't, uh, submit that to, uh, the county, so they're going through that process. But as far as I know, that's, that's all we have on the , uh, projects. Do you want to mention that, uh, Zach and I spent some time over at Northwest Arkansas Planning, getting some assistance to do an overlay district on 412 and 612, an intersection there. Um, I've also requested that RDOT do a corridor study, at least from that intersection into, uh, some down by Harmer, Harmon, excuse me. Um, kind of get us a, a better picture of maybe restricted access and to build a nice, uh, medium in there that has lights and, you know, knowing that, hey, you're in Tonty Town now, and it's beautiful, and it's something we're gonna be working on. So, we'll be working on that. They'll actually put together a design along with, uh, an ordinance that we can take a look at. We also, uh, Zach and I and Brad are beginning through the development codes. And some of the stuff that you see that's come up, just in similar circumstances that we just saw tonight on the rezoning, um, we're gonna be making some recommendations of some changes on the development code. Um, some are gonna be a little bit more stringent, but, um, you'll see. If you have any ideas or anything that you'd like to see, tell us. It's gonna be a work in progress, but, uh, I hope to get that done by the middle of this year, um, to move on. One of the ideas that I've been sharing about is, is that is actually putting in the code a, what you call a rural development area subdivision. This would actually create areas that I think will not be developed that, uh, you know, and if you look at going west, most of your property out there is very, um, hilly. And it's not gonna be conducive to building an R3 residential subdivision. It's gonna be more of a rural feel. Kind of like, if you get a chance, go out and look at Deer Valley. Um, you know, it's gonna be larger lots, but maybe not stringent on the fact that you've got to build curb and gutter. Uh, more of a two to three acre lot type sizes. So, um, we'll be, uh, looking at that, too, bringing that to y'all, and see if that's something you would like to see done. But that's all I have right now.
Brad, you have anything?
Nothing.
All right, Candy?
I have nothing.
No comments from Candy. Tom?
I would, I would agree that there's probably a need for a rural subdivision, a little, little less stringency, and, uh, allow people to have a little more lot without the cost of the infrastructure for the developers. And, uh, even the west development over there towards Harmon Road, uh, as we continue to grow west, just looking at that in a little bit different way, I think there's demand for it, and, and it can be done rightly.
Donnie?
A question, more than anything, of what we can do as a city. We, we had a, we had a pretty nasty incident January 14th out on the south end of Barrington Road and Reed Valley Road, where, uh, uh, there was a wreck with the Henshaw's Bull. That was a pretty big deal, talked about on Facebook. And, uh, a lot of us were without gas till late that night or the next morning. And I had a couple, I got, I called, I was fortunate enough to get ahold of somebody at Black Hills and, and, and had them tell me what was going on. So then I jumped on the Reed Valley POA Facebook page group. And, uh, then subsequently, a couple of, a couple of neighbors on there said, wow, this is crazy. No notification to us. Can the city not send out some sort of a notification? I mean, I know we have a pretty big population that that would go to now, 9,000 people or whatever, but, you know, there was, I think finally, there was something on Channel 5 News later in the evening, but it is the, that's right, you, you did that, you got involved in that. But is there, is there some kind of an emergency-type deal that can happen for a city to notify the citizens of a city of something like that? But is there, is there some kind of an emergency type deal that can happen for a city to notify the citizens of a city of something like that? Okay. I mean, it, it, as, as a couple people brought it up to me, it made a lot of sense because everybody was just kind of operating blind on why their furnaces wouldn't work, water heaters wouldn't work, couldn't hurt, couldn't get their stove on, kind of blew me away for a while too. So anyway, that's
There's actually, if you're familiar with the Code Red Alert, I don't know if the county actually runs that, but they can actually zoom down into specific areas and send out if you sign up for it. It's like emergency, you know, type tornado warning or anything like that. We might look into that. It's Code Red.
Yeah, you can come up here. Yeah, yeah.
So that would be something each individual would have to sign up for to receive that Code Red.
Yep, that's correct. Yes.
So ultimately
Please state your name. I'm just kidding.
Angela Russell, fourteen ninety seven, Arbor Acres, Mayor of Tonty Town. How's that?
That's good.
So ultimately, it is each of the utilities responsibility to get it out to the citizens. I didn't even know, as soon as I found out about it, I contacted, I was contacted with the news. So that's how we were able to do it and we were able to put it on our Facebook. And as, as soon as we can find out about it here at the city, then we can get it on that, on the text message system if you're signed up for that, as well as the Facebook page. But please sign up for the text messages. It will tell you our meetings, when our meetings are, if there's anything that's going on, like an emergency. When I find out about it, I have to be notified. And if I'm not a citizen, I mean, I'm sorry, if I'm not on that area that's been blocked out, if there's no power there, they're not going to contact me. So unless I'm contacted or someone of the citizen, one of the citizens contact me, that's when I can get it out. But we can't get it out unless we're notified as well. So it will be up to the citizens that doesn't have the gas or the power or whatever it may be to contact the city to let them know to get it out. Otherwise, it is the individual utility company's problem or not problem, but issue to get it out. So that's all I can do. I'm sorry.
Makes sense. I'll get word out to the folks on the south end of town.
Is that it, Donnie?
Yes.
All right, James? And I have nothing. James has nothing. How about you, Josh?
This is, I'm pretty sure this is a fake quote. Maybe more of a meme, but it's Denzel Washington. It says, "Some people never like you because you kill more deer than them." Denzel Washington. But I'm pretty sure that's fake, but it, I thought it was funny enough to share.
I've got two things really. Just don't forget our packets that we need to get back by Friday. And this Saturday from ten to four is the grand opening of the fire station, the new fire station from ten to four. So please come out. We're having, we're having food and hot dog and hamburgers and, and fun and, but no fire pole. I tried to get the fire pole and we didn't get a fire pole, but maybe the next one we'll get a fire pole. So it's my goal.
I'll Say one, one thing?
Yes, sir, Mr. Larry.
I want to commend the planning commission and that gentleman right back there in the corner. When we were coming to work at twelve o'clock yesterday, gentleman was here a lot earlier than that because, and you know, these guys coming to work like that. Boom's up.
We do appreciate it.
We got a good, got good butts here.
Larry told me he was going to do that.
If no other, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. You know, if everybody in agreement, say aye. Thank you all.